We're just a minute or two away from beginning the meeting, but before we begin, I'd invite you to stand, join me in the pledge, and then I'll bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the free republic of this land, one nation, united, in whose court the union is settled.
Darren, Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet tonight, and God, we just ask that you guide us tonight. We thank you for the community we serve. Thank you for each of these council members and each of these staff members and for our residents who are here. God, just help us to have a good meeting and guide us as we make decisions tonight that are best for the city of Springdale and the people of Springdale. And God, we trust you for all these things now. In Jesus's name, amen. All right. Again, welcome tonight. This is a regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, May 27, 2025, if you've gone all day without realizing that. And I will start things off by asking our city clerk to call the roll. Sabre?
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Emilia Taldo? Jeff Watson? Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson? Aaron Huntley?
Here.
Randall Herrman?
Here.
Mark Fujerus?
Here.
Ernest Kate?
Here.
All right, thank you. We are now at item four, comments from our citizens. If we have citizens that would like to speak to the council tonight concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, we invite you to come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address and keep your comments brief, and understand that we won't be taking action tonight on anything. I know, Ron, as you're--come on, Ron, you can start. I didn't know who all might want to speak, so I just wanted to ask that we not get real repetitive and--but I think I'm for what you're going to say. I just-- we really, after last week's committee meeting, and the item was brought forward that we discussed about the prairie restoration and the stream bank restoration at JB Hunt Park, I suggested--Ben and I had talked about the possibility of maybe getting someone here to explain that a lot better than I could, because I don't know if I did a very good job. But so we welcome you all here tonight. I know there's others here, but if more of you than one want to speak, let's try and make sure it's something new, or you can speak for all of them. It's up to whatever you all decide. Thank you.
Ron Minett, I'm 4900 North Graham Road, and as the mayor has said, I am a big advocate of using native plants in our environment. And in particular, if you've been to Lake Springdale, you've seen the rain garden, and hopefully you all got my email showing what Lake Springdale looked like five years ago and what it looks like now. It's made a big difference. And that's the big point we say. You know, one of the master naturals had a very valid point, and hopefully you've got this same thing. She said, "The first year when you do a rain garden or native plant place, first it sleeps, the second year it creeps, and the third year it leaps." And I think that's what you'll see on the IRWP area there at Hunt Park, is that if you give it a little time, those native plants will take over, because you'll have lower maintenance costs, natural flood and erosion control, habitat for pollinators. The hay field really doesn't benefit any native pollinators or wildlife. And, you know, it's proven--it's civic pride. If you look--I've talked to people there at Lake Springdale when they've asked me about what they're doing there, and I explained the logic and the benefits that will happen. They go, "Oh," they see the light, and they can also compare to what we've done there at Lake Springdale, the trailhead. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ron. I will compliment everyone on their emails. I thought if I was copied on all of them, I was copied on several, and I thought they were all very well-done and really good information. So, thank you all for doing that. There was no action on this taken. There's none proposed to be taken yet, so hopefully we'll--but if anybody else would like to speak, come on up.
Hi, I'm Catherine Burkhead at 802 Maple Drive, and I want to just pick up on one of the points that Ron made, and that is about the use of pollinators. I think a lot of us, especially as I've gotten older--I'm even more of a bird lover than I was before-- and our birds need insects, and the pollinators need the flowers in order to thrive. And so, you know, if we were to do--if we were to go a different direction with that now, it's kind of like trying to let your hair cut out, hair grow out, but giving up and getting a haircut. Don't do it, right? Let your hair grow out. It takes some time. So, let's just give it some time to get to where it needs to go, because it's going to benefit all our environment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone else? I think there were some really good things that came out of that discussion, even though there were no real decisions made. And Jeff, I haven't talked to Ben about this, I don't think, but I thought one of--a real good one is if we decide where that--the edge of that prairie is going to be, whether it stays out as close to the road it is now or whether it eventually gets cut back a little closer to the creek. I thought Jeff's suggestion about some kind of wooden--kind of a fence to delineate that, so that people would--and it could really be something that people see and with signage, and they understand and that kind of thing. So, kind of more of an education opportunity. And then if we had a 12-foot side path running along there, we'd even--I'd even like it better. So, maybe we ought to start looking more at that and how we do that. So, yeah, yeah. All right. Anybody else? If not, we'll move on. Is any--we're open to any subjects that aren't on tonight's agenda. Was there anyone else planning to speak tonight?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and give shout-out to Catherine. You know, sometimes we forget that we have a lot of volunteers in our city. Ron is one, and Catherine. My wife recently undertook the project of trying to be a master gardener. Well, one of the things you have to do as a master gardener is time, volunteer your time, and she's been volunteering at the museum. And Catherine is a big volunteer, so she's gotten to know Catherine really well and enjoys working with her. But, you know, we have a lot of volunteers that we forget to thank sometime, and I just want to make sure we do that.
That's good. Good. Thank you. All right. Well, we'll move on then to the next item, which is the approval of minutes. Counsel, if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to approve as presented? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you. And now procedural motions. Item six, what's your pleasure, counsel?
I'll move for A and B.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion, a second, for both A and B, and I'll call for the vote on the procedural motions. All right. Thank you. But--let's see if we can fix that, just for the minutes that our screen showed Rex Bailey instead of Aaron.
You can't tell the difference.
You can fix it. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Aaron, thanks for noticing that.
Might want to back up there, depending on what we're voting on. Someday. Yeah, let him get the phone calls. All right, Sharon, are you ready?
Welcome. Planning Commission report and recommendations. Sharon Tromberg, our Director of Planning and Community Development.
Thank you, counsel, mayor. Make sure it's on. There we go. All right, our first item--well, there's no need to sugarcoat it. This is correcting an error from three years ago, an error in a legal description for Lex Estates. It's just north of Wagon Wheel Road and is adjacent to Graham Road, and there was about two and a half acres that northern area that was left off. You can see it right there, the green square at the top. That should also be SF1, and as they get ready to final plat, we wanted to correct this. The title reads, "An Ordnance Amending, Ordinance Number 5703, Which Rezoned Certain Lands From Agricultural District A1 To Low-Density Single-Family Residential District SF1, And Declaring An Emergency."
Move the ordinance, pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Other comments or questions? Anyone? All right, call for the vote.
Carry six, zero. Has emergency clause.
Move the emergency clause be adopted?
Second. We have a motion, a second, for the emergency clause. Call for the vote.
Carry six, zero.
Before I move on, I will note that I added, as the mayor pointed out to me just a little while ago, I added an extra item. So, the notes that I sent earlier today, disregard item J. There was an extra one. I was just so excited to hear plat about the cemetery, but you will hear that at the next council meeting.
Thanks.
All right. So, our next one is a rezone from MF4 to a PUD, and this is a pretty big project that's going to contain over 67 single-family sites on a little over 10 acres. And I know that we have the applicant representative here that may want to speak to the project a little bit, answer any questions about this PUD and this development, if there's any details or any lingering questions that you all have. But I'll go ahead and read the title. "In Ordnance Amending, Ordinance Number 3307, The Same Being The Zoning Ordinance Of The City Of Springdale, Arkansas, And The Plat Pertaining There Too, By Rezoning R-25-17 Certain Lands Located At Ford Avenue West Of Cascade Circle From Low-Medium Density Multi-Family Residential District MF4 To A Planned Unit Development PUD Within Springdale, Arkansas, And Declaring An Emergency." Mr. Gallo, Mr. Stanley?
On this map, it shows Ford Avenue coming through. Is there any plan to take that on through to Amherst?
Is Amherst north? Sorry.
No, and connected to that neighborhood?
Yes, there's going to be a connection to Dick Smith. Let me see if--I don't have a picture on it that accurately does it.
Yeah, what?
What does that road connection look like?
It's not drawn in yet, because there was no direction on exactly where it was going to end up coming through the project or on the side of the project.
Ben, can you help us there? Aren't we--we're going to connect Dick Smith to the south, correct?
We're connecting Dick Smith to the south, but I think his question is Amherst to the east.
But nothing there.
They're not planning on making that connection.
No.
That neighborhood will stay the way it is.
Correct. There's no vehicular access.
Right.
So, the existing neighborhood to the east of there, it looked like there was a stubbed-out road. What was the purpose in that?
For a future connection, that is true, but I think it was at the recommendation there's also Dean's Trail is right there, so that would also, if they were to utilize that connection, that stub out there from that development, they would have to--engineering would have to go over a trail crossing for vehicular access.
Yeah. That was built early 2000s, 90s, something?
Yeah, Butterfield Gardens, late 90s.
When that first went in, the residents on Dick Smith did not want that subdivision to have access via Dick Smith?
No, they did not.
And since that time, the trails come through, and now the access is not to that subdivision, but it will be to Ford Avenue.
That was a PUD, wasn't it? That looked like one of our first PUDs?
It was. It was one of the first ones. The Commons.
It was converted later. Any other questions?
Sure. My name's Dave Gallo, and I actually represent Eagle Homes, and we have two communities that we built in Rogers, Arkansas. I've been doing this for a grand total 10 years. And that's actually a picture of our community on Montney Road. And basically, what we're building out is affordable homes. We have an opportunity for some smaller homes that are going to be 420 square foot, up to 510 square foot, that offer folks the affordability. And the--one of the things, you know, there's a ton of information about the project. I'm not going to go through that. You guys have probably taken the liberty to read most of that. I want to just talk about what I'm most proud of. And what I'm most proud of are the unsung heroes of Eagle Homes, and that's our residents. We have great residents. We have 76 total units. We have 26 on Olive Street and 50 on Montney, and those are totally built out with some great folks. And the folks that take a lot of pride in their community, they take a lot of pride in the fact that, you know, they own something that they may not have been able to afford because of the cost of houses, and they have something that's well-maintained and well-taken care of, that's structured with community rules, that has onsite management to make sure that everyone's following the rules and keeping the community beautiful and personalized. And if you've ever driven through our communities, they personalize their space. And I think oftentimes when we present projects, we often forget about the beneficiaries of those projects. And I can't tell you the countless people that have thanked me, you know, inside our community just for the opportunity to own a home for the first time, or, hey, my spouse has passed, and I don't need something as big, but I still want to own my own four walls. And so, that's really what I would say that I'm most proud of, and that's exactly what we want to do on Ford Avenue, is we want to build out a community that are full of residents that are what I would call low impact to the infrastructure, basically 1.2 people per dwelling is what we average, and less than a car or right at a car per dwelling, 1.1. So, very low impact overall, but yet they want to spend their life outside of their home. They don't want to be owned by their home. So, they're going out into the community. They're volunteering in the community, as we've already heard here tonight, and they're investing in the community. These are folks that want to live life, like I said, they don't want to be owned by their house. So, if there's any question about the project itself, I'll be more than happy to answer those. If there's technical questions, John, who represents Phil Swob's Engineering, is here to help answer the technical questions.
Dave, you talked about ownership. There's something here that looks like sublease and termination of lease. Will some of these be leased, or will these all be available to buy?
We have 100%--
Sorry. Yeah, if you get that mic--
We have 100% owner occupants. I shouldn't say that. We have one rental unit out of the 76. It's a unique situation, and he's not homeless. So, we have 75 homeowners and one rental in our current communities. The objective is to fill this up with folks that own their own home.
But the land spot is leased.
Yes, the land is leased.
It's a land lease.
Yes. Which, when you create density like that, and having the fact that we have a management team that--an ownership of the land, it gives us that ability to make sure that it stays nice, because they're in proximity, close proximity to one another. What someone thinks is nice, someone else may not. And so, we help guide and direct that through architectural guidelines and through management principles and practices.
Do you guys provide financing for these, or is this--do you get third-party financing?
We actually do have third-party financing. We have one bank that will finance the homes. We have also a couple of other lenders that--internet-type lenders that are sublenders for these types of dwellings. So, but yeah, we don't do--I don't carry any notes for individuals.
Could you talk about the parking?
Yes, sir. So, every house, like I said, 1.1 cars per house, but yet we have two parking spaces per house, and we also have visitor parking. John, I don't remember the exact number of visitor parking spaces that we have, but--
Eight visitor and one employee parking.
Eight visitor, one employee parking, and then also two dedicated spaces for a single-wide driveway next to many of the homes on the east side, and then on the west side, there's two parking spaces out in front of the dwellings per house.
Is it on-street parking allowed?
No, sir.
It's not allowed at all?
Not allowed at all. I mean, we'll have that happen when folks are unloading their, you know, their furniture and stuff or getting the delivery, but no, there is no on-street parking.
And how's that enforced?
That's enforced through man--honestly, this was a question that was asked over the last 16 months, because that's how long we've been doing this. I literally have not had that issue in Rogers, because people have ample parking as well as ample visitor parking. The one--I don't even allow the residents to use the visitor parking unless they check with me first, let alone on-street parking. We enforce that through management practices.
So, how's the management work? There's onsite management. Can you talk about how the management?
Sure. Let me--yeah, so I'll tell you exactly how we've done it the first two times, is that my company, me, or my wife, DNC, Dave and Chris, one of us is onsite, typically every day except Sunday, through the absorption process. With a project at 67 houses, we're targeting around 35 to 40 homes where we would actually identify someone within the community, which we've done in our other two communities, that then would take over, not necessarily the enforcement, because they're part of the community, but that they would be my eyes and ears, and then I would get text messages, and I would deal with things that might become a confrontation. Very rarely does that happen, but that's the way we've done it on our first two communities, and it's worked out really well.
But what's the management for? The homes are owned by the residents, right?
Yes, sir.
So, what is the role of the manager?
The role of the management is to make sure that the community rules and regulations are enforced. So, if there is someone that's parking on-street or someone, a resident parking in the visitor parking, that they'll let me know and let me deal with it. If there's someone that's playing their music loud, then I deal with noise issues. If there's someone that is not leashing their dogs when they let it out, I deal with those issues, to the point where we actually, early on in my career doing this, nine years ago, had to have a tenant move out because they wouldn't abide by the leash laws, which were basically Rogers' leash laws. So, you all have Springdale leash law, so I'm just enforcing your rules as well.
And staying on the question of management, this may be a question for Sharon, but what happens if you--if you are basically the owner right now, correct?
Yes, sir.
And what happens if you sell? I mean, is there a requirement that there be an onsite management from forever, or how does that work?
There is, for at least 50 years, as that's the PUD agreement, the development plan that they brought forth. So, technically, with a single-family development like this, onsite management wouldn't be required, but if they're going to offer it, and there are enough things on this site, and having a dense, smaller site, I think it's helpful. But yeah, the lease agreement that our code requires is for a minimum of 50 years.
We probably talked about this in earlier meetings. What is the maximum occupancy per building?
Two. Two's the maximum occupancy. If there's a--we have a one-bedroom with what I would say is an office. I mean, it's really not big enough. If there was like a single mom and they had a child there, then we would, you know, obviously, they have the two rooms available for, something like that. But we mostly, like I said, we average over 76 units, 1.1--no, it's 1.18 residents per unit. So, we have--it's about one out of every five has two people. We have none with three in it.
Is there a common areas?
Yes, sir. John, you want to address common areas?
Yes, sir. We have several common areas throughout the development. We've got one here just east of--or west of where, I guess, where Tuttle would intersect. There is Tuttle, right?
Yes.
North would be to your left. Yes, sir.
Yes.
So, there's common areas to the north? We've got a common area to the north, incorporated with our stormwater area as well, dog park, and some amenities there. And then we've got a common area just to the west of where Tuttle would intersect, if it were to go through the site. We've got like a grilling, an outdoor fire gathering area there as well, trying to meet the grain space of the PUD requirements. We actually exceed those a little bit.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
And mayor, just to refresh my understanding, Sharon, maybe, if we accept this PUD, we're responsible for the streets, just like a subdivision. Is that correct?
Are these going to be private streets, aren't they?
It's going to be a private street. There's just one internal street, and it's planned to be private, so we will not have to maintain it.
Okay, we do have a motion. Second. And a second. Other questions, comments? I think it's time for something like this in Springdale. I appreciate you bringing it, and it looks, from the pictures and what I've heard so far in Rogers, it's going very well.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody in the audience? Okay. Let's call for the vote.
Carry six, zero.
Move the emergency clause be adopted?
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, for the emergency clause. Call for the vote.
Carry six, zero.
All right. Thank you.
Our third item is another rezoning, and this one's off of Lowell Road, going from a commercial to an office district. Get to the slide. So, this request came to us for a 1.41 acre tract, and it was voted for approval unanimously, eight, zero. It aligns with the comprehensive land use plan, which is there. And the title of this one reads, "An Ordnance Amending, Ordinance Number 3307, The Same Being The Zoning Ordinance Of The City Of Springdale, Arkansas, And The Plat Pertaining There Too, By Rezoning R-25-26 Certain Lands Located At 1800 North Lowell Road From General Commercial District C2 To Neighborhood Office District O1 Within Springdale, Arkansas, And Declaring An Emergency."
Can you go back to the zoning map?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Are there other questions? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Move the emergency clause be adopted?
Okay, call for the vote on the emergency clause.
All right. The next item is a rezoning, a C5 on Wagon Wheel. How exciting. This one is right next to I-49. This was passed unanimously, and this was actually a reasoning that was recommended by staff. They have an approved development plan to the C5 lot just south, and just to come into compliance and come more into conformity, we requested that they rezone their original non-conforming business, the A1, just to align with their new development plan. The title of this one reads, "An Ordnance Amending, Ordinance Number 3307, The Same Being The Zoning Ordinance Of The City Of Springdale, Arkansas, And The Plat Pertaining There Too, By Rezoning R-25-27 Certain Lands Located At 4269 Wagon Wheel Road From Agricultural District To Thoroughfare Commercial District C5 Within Springdale, Arkansas, And Declaring An Emergency."
Move the ordinance be adopted?
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance.
Well, Sharon, I'll just have to say, we don't hate all C5.
I know, I know.
Just like in all real estate, everything's location, location, location.
It is.
Any other?
Did I write that down?
Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Carry six, zero.
Move the emergency clause be adopted?
Second. All right, call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carry six, zero.
All right. Our next item is a proposed rezoning for a church that wants to relocate to 48th Street. This request is--apologies, let me find my place. This request is going from an A1 to a P1 institutional zone. The ordinance reads, "An Ordnance Amending, Number 3307, The Same Being The Zoning Ordinance Of The City Of Springdale, Arkansas-- of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-2528, certain lands located at 1820 North 48th Street from Agricultural District to Institutional District within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
I don't have my cheat sheet with me. Can you remind me some of the types of things that can go on a P1?
P1, I don't have everything right in front of me, but institutional, so schools, churches, city uses by right, it's fairly limited to what is actually allowed to go there.
How about an event center?
Nope.
I can't think of anything that is P1 right now. Not to say there's not, but I can't think of anything that doesn't fit into one of those categories.
Pretty limited.
School, church, and government. Any other questions? No.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
All right, we do have now a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Carry six, zero.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second for the emergency clause. Call for the vote.
Carry six, zero.
All right, and the next two items that we have, F and G, are actually related. So it might be good to, to think about these two projects together. So the first one is, is a rezoning, and this right here shows that track. So this is set off just north, over 300 feet from County Line Road, and they're seeking A1 to SF1 to build a home. And the ordinance for the rezoning reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-2529, certain lands located at 5830 West County Line Road from Agricultural District to Low Density Single Family Residential District within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
Move ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the room need to speak to this?
So you said these two different tracks?
Correct. The next item that we're going to hear is the actual split of those tracks.
Is the split of?
So they're proposing to.
Okay, so are we looking at the rezoning of the entire two tracks together?
No, just, just the acre and a half that's kind of cut out of the middle. That yellow that is on that site plan? Mm-hmm. Because they're proposing to split off that piece. And they want to leave the remainder of the tract as A1.
I'm sorry, the picture we actually have in our packet is the entire thing. That right there is the entire thing, and it's just a little?
Correct. And we did, we did one map for both projects, because the next project does involve the whole track.
Okay.
Apologies for that confusion.
All right.
All right, any other comments or questions? We do have a motion, a second. Call for the vote.
Carry six, zero.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Motion, a second on the emergency clause. Call for the vote.
Carry six, zero.
The next item, G, is a conditional use request for a tandem lot, and so this would actually allow that split of that one and a half acres. And then also there's a proposed access easement, so their driveway just smack in the min- middle of that lot that goes to County Line. So this tandem lot is to approve them accessing it just via that, that driveway.
Okay, read the title.
Oh, yes, sorry. The, the title of this conditional use, "A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use, C-25-04 at 5830 West County Line Road is set forth in ordinance number 4030."
Never resolution pass.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
So what's the conditional use?
It's a tandem lot. So it's to be able to, to split off a piece of property with zero public road frontage. So you can only get there with an access easement or a driveway, usually through another track to get there.
So during the tandem lot split, does that, does that set off any improvements? Required improvements or anything anywhere?
Other than the pavement of, of, of the actual drive, paving the drive, we require a 25-foot access easement, but with five on each side, so they only have to pave 15 of it. But we will actually not sign their lot split until that we've seen that drive has been paved.
Okay. Anyone else?
Doesn't require any improvements to county, county road?
No, sir.
All right. We'll call for the vote.
Carry six, zero.
Okay, Sharon?
Was that the emergency clause for it? Sorry. Gotcha. All right, so our next rezoning request is over on Marchant Road, and this is for just under five acre tract that's located at the southeast corner of Marchant Road, just where it bends at the south end of Trails and Ranch Road. And they are requesting to go from A1 to C2. The title of this ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-2530, certain lands located at 11039 Marchant Road from Agricultural District to General Commercial District within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
Could you go back to the last one?
This one?
No, the one you just skipped over.
This reflects the current zoning as it is today.
We even have a land use plan in that area?
We do. This one right here, it kind of looks like a heat map almost with that red. And again, this is, this is from 2017, but we anticipated future commercial growth kind of in that area. Mm-hmm. And that was before we had more confirmation about where exactly 612 would be, which is why it's kind of a vague node of commercial.
And was there any opposition to this at all?
I believe that, that little housing, that little subdivision to the east is in, that's in Tawny Town, isn't it?
Yes, correct, or Elm Springs.
Elm Springs?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, right. It's in Elm Springs. Okay.
Move the ordinance pass.
Okay. We have a motion.
So we feel like this, this area is picking up a commercial flavor because of the interstate? Or the highway, whatever?
It definitely changes the, the land use landscape of the area. It promotes more, more commercial. There's heavier roads.
Again, was there any opposition that you?
No, not at Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Carry six, zero. Emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carry six, zero.
All right. Our next request is another rezoning, and this one is a request to go from C2 to C6, right just north of the intersection of Don Tyson Parkway and South Old Missouri Road. The title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-25-31, certain lands located at 1150 Elway Drive from General Commercial District to a large product retail sales district within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
Could you explain, large product retail?
C6 is for car sales, or, or large. That is primarily the, the biggest use, but large, large product sales, typically vehicles, boats, ones that you want to see from a busy, heavy road that have the outdoor display. So this one, the applicant is seeking to, to have car sales there, and they've been working with us for a while. And of course, access and other elements of this development plan would, would have to be submitted through us.
Was there opposition on this, Sharon?
There was no, no opposition, no letters beforehand.
Will, will you throw up the zoning map? You got that on there?
This is the current zoning, and then this is reflected with the land use.
Could that be a gravel car lot?
No, sir.
So go on that land use that red represents what?
Regional commercial.
Sharon, do you understand the map? Do you understand the map where it shows the property that's asking to be rezoned? And then there's a long, narrow strip that looks like Elway Drive goes through. Is, is that a separate track of land that Elway Drive crosses? Or what, what's the situation? And would, does this property have access to Elway Drive?
It does have access. I'm, I'm not sure. I, I see what you're talking about. It may be a platted subdivision, and that may just be the boundary lines of, of that, that subdivision.
Could you go back to the latest drawing of that previous map?
This one?
Uh, looks like it goes all the way to Elway Drive. Maybe, I can't really tell. What's going on there? You, planner?
County maps are not exact, and they say that on their website.
Move the ordinance to pass.
So you cannot do a car lot on a C2?
No, sir, only by conditional use.
The council really separated that out many years ago.
And, and we discussed that when the, with the applicant when they came in, and if they came in and said, "We could do a conditional use in a C2." However, if the land use plan aligns with their desired goal, that's really the way to come into conformity, which is why we recommended they try this route.
Yeah, if you're not going to put a C6 on a five-lane highway, then I don't know where you'd put it. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, call for the vote.
Carries five, one. Does have emergency clause.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Okay, uh, call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Emergency clause does not pass, so we'll have to take that off. The ordinance passes, but the emergency clause does not require six votes.
Okay. And I can't vote on that.
Okay. All right, our next item, our last two are waivers. So this is kind of an interesting one. They had requested, this is on East Emma and right where it intersects with, with Huntsville Avenue, and they ultimately wanted to do a split that was going to result in three tracks. And the way that our code reads, they would have to, to plat that as a, as a subdivision. And they also had rezoned it a couple months ago, P1, O1, and MF4. So they did not want to do a platted subdivision, mainly because of Track 3, which is the one, that one that, it's west, but it kind of shows, it looks like it's south here, but it's west. It is, the majority of that tract has wetlands on it. It may be buildable, but it's going to take, somebody is going to have to, to study that a little bit further. And so Planning Commission approved at the May meeting for this to be reviewed administratively on the staff level, just by a lot split and not by a platted subdivision. So they are now here just asking for the waiver to not have to complete the street improvements and subdivision requirements that are involved with a preliminary plat. And the title of this, of this reads, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver, W-2502, of Street Improvements, Drainage, Curbs, Gutters, Sidewalks, and Streetlights is Set forth in Ordinance Number 3725 to Marlin Benegas in Connection with LS-24-36, an informal plat."
I know you tried to explain that, but I'm not sure I kept up with you. Wha- what are they planning on plating? All three tracks?
They wanted to. She wants to split off this, this small one on the west side that says MF4, that's .41 acres. She wants to split that off and sell it. The city, we would require her to, to literally create a subdivision to do that and, and, and have street improvements and utilities to it.
So, so they're going to plat it into three tracks? Is that what it is? That's the plat?
Yes.
Is the three tracks?
Correct.
And to split it into three tracks, you have to do a plat because of the size, I guess? And then when you do a plat, there's certain requirements, street requirements and things like that. And so they're hoping to divide this into three tracks without having to do all those improvements in, in the, in the plat?
Yes, sir.
Correct? And is that a good thing or a bad thing?
I'm fairly neutral. I, I, I see where they're coming from, that there are some, some difficult natures to this with wetlands and further studies being needed. And the street improvements, right? If there was no sidewalk, I, I think there might have been, there wouldn't have been support from the Planning Commission. But right now, I think I, so Huntsville Avenue would need to go from a five-foot sidewalk to a 10. And on the west side would need to go from eight foot to 10. Yes, yes. But the waiver would include both sides, all the requirements.
What else would be required? What else are we waiving?
Street light, potentially, this is a collector, so it's built out, but there's still a little additional right-of-way that they're going to dedicate. They just don't want to have to actually widen the road for that portion.
So these three tracks are to be platted to potentially sell?
Correct.
So a new owner come in, they would have to come and?
Well, it depends how they were going to use the land.
Or would this waiver carry on through that process?
It would. It would be able to carry on if you passed it. So if somebody did purchase that Track 3 and had to do a sidewalk, if this waiver passed, they could leave it at the five-foot sidewalk and not have to come back and request it.
About Track 1, though, that apparently faces Emma Avenue?
It needs a widened sidewalk.
Following up with Brian's question, if there was a new owner, would, would they have to make any improvements? If we waive it now, we're waiving it.
Pretty, pretty good hill there.
And the road kind of naturally split this property whenever the road improvements were, were done. And we have encouraged the property owner for that Track 3 to reach out to some of the adjacent properties, because really, the, the, the best way to utilize that land is to combine it with other nearby. it with other nearby and include it in some sort of other development. So we've encouraged them to explore that route.
That Emma Avenue doesn't end up there? It continues on around? I move the resolution be adopted, option 1.
All right, we have a motion with option 1?
I guess I'm still stuck on tract 1 that faces Emma Avenue and whether or not it's a good thing to waive the improvements on Emma. I mean, I get it with 3 and the biggest portion of 2, but what about 1?
Well, they have access to the sidewalk. The sidewalk stops about a fourth, what, a third of the way through the property, it looks like. And I don't know, I'm trying to picture that road, Jeff. It starts getting pretty squirrely.
Emma?
Yeah, yeah, as it goes east there. And I'm not sure, I wish I had a better picture in my mind of what happens to it. It's hard to see the topography here. It starts going up the hill there. It does have sidewalk all the way to that existing driveway, it looks like, if I'm seeing this right. Really, you got about the same amount of sidewalk as you do going west. I guess that was just as far as they went. That was part of the Huntsville project when they did it.
So Ben, is there any city plans on doing any lights, sidewalks, or work or anything there on that?
No, Emma east of Huntsville is probably what it's going to be for the foreseeable future. It just does a loop and comes back. It only serves those local properties. There's virtually no through traffic.
And none on for Huntsville either?
No, Huntsville's, it's what we wanted at the time. I mean, ideally, we'd love to go to our new master street plan, but for the frontage that we have here, it doesn't make any sense to do that for that shorter period of time.
Don't have a second yet. If we're not going to get a second, we'd entertain a different motion.
Is there any way of waiving up the sidewalks everywhere except tract 1?
So basically, you would be asking them to build a sidewalk from where the sidewalk ends on Emma going east to the property line?
I'm not sure I'm asking for them to because they're asking to waive that requirement.
Right. But if you didn't waive that, they would be required to do just that section of sidewalk on tract 1.
What width of sidewalk would be required? 10-foot?
Not where you're talking about. There's nothing where you're talking about. Yeah. A five-foot. Well, I guess they would have to do, I guess they'd have to do all the way to that tract property line.
Well, that's tract 2, though.
No, if they went all the way to track, to tract 2, if you waived it, if you waived...
Just my thought is, what you were asking, if we agree to this, the next owners don't have to do anything to it.
Add the property to the east-south, whatever that is?
Well, my answer to that would be, I'm having trouble distinguishing what difference it makes who owns it. It's either, it's either okay to be waived or it's not.
Property owner here? So is there any way, Ernest, just carrying this hypothetical out further, is there any way that we could just require an extension of the five-foot sidewalk to the edge of, to the, I guess that's north, east, to very east of tract 1?
Aren't we requiring all sidewalks to be 10 feet now, though?
Depends on the street. On this one, they would.
You could waive five feet from where the driveway, the east side of the driveway to the east property line. You could give them a waiver for a five-foot sidewalk instead of a 10-foot sidewalk. Yes.
Let me check what I just said, Mike. I'm not sure on this one. I'm not sure tract 1 would because there's been, I don't know what, I don't know if Emma changes classification there, Ben. Okay. It may, it may change the classification where it wouldn't require 10-foot.
It becomes a local street, which would be a smaller sidewalk. I think a local street would require eight-foot.
Okay.
Eight-foot waiver.
Well, I'm inclined to go along with it as except for that portion of the sidewalk. I don't know what everybody else is thinking.
So if I got it in my mind right, Jeff, what, if we deny it for tract 1, at the beginning, at the western edge of tract 1, that five-foot sidewalk would need to go to 8 and continue east for the length of the property, right?
And I don't, I'm not sure I even want to deny everything. I mean, there's other things we'd be waiving too, like streetlights and street improvements, I guess. Sharon, what were the other things? Street improvements? We wouldn't have to do any street improvements because it's already improved, right? Except for the sidewalk?
Well, technically, the current master street plan does show for Huntsville as an arterial as it goes down to. So it technically calls for a wider road. Wider road, wider sidewalks, potentially, streetlights.
So basically, what I'm saying, and I don't know how to word it, is I'm okay with granting all of her waivers except that sidewalk, that portion of the sidewalk.
On tract 1?
On tract 1.
Or there's not already a sidewalk?
So the east side of the drive of tract 1?
So would that, would that make it the same as the sidewalk on the west side, which I think's a five-foot sidewalk?
To five, yeah.
The way it matches?
A local requires a six-foot sidewalk.
Starting at?
The driveway.
At the driveway.
Right, because there's, through the west of the driveways.
You've got a five-foot, but that's not, but I don't know how you word that because if you do tract 1, tract...
They'd have to widen the sidewalk?
Well, I would think they'd have to widen it all the way to the edge of that track.
Unless, unless you gave, unless you gave them a waiver for the existing sidewalk and then for the, for the part going east, you required them to build a six-foot sidewalk just for that distance from the drive to the east boundary line of tract 1. And then give them the waiver on the remainder. Is that a motion? I'm asking you if that's your motion.
We've got, doesn't fit what you just...
Have you got a second or not?
No. We're open to...
Well, that would be my motion.
Okay, everybody understand that?
Does she understand what we're...
They'll have to build a short section of, if you, according to Jeff's motion, if you pass that, they'd have to build a short section from the driveway east of a six-foot sidewalk where there is no existing sidewalk. This is the kind of thing where I wish I could look at it. On the lane, I don't know what we're putting, I don't know what we're putting on them here.
Should have brought a flow chart. Said I should have brought a flow chart, diagram.
Brian wants to bring up an issue.
So you don't have a second for your...
I'm, just, pardon me for a second. I'm just concerned that if we do, this is a, be a blanket waiver for whomever for all three tracks. That's correct, right? So I guess that's my biggest concern because there may be other improvements by the time it's sold, by the time another person comes in. There may be other improvements and I'm just a little concerned about just a blanket for whomever buys it.
Well, she could just not split these and they wouldn't have to do anything.
Wasn't the original comment was that she's splitting it so she can sell it? Had plans to sell it?
Track 3. I'm still, I know I, y'all, three of y'all have mentioned this, so I know I'm missing something, but I'm, I'm having trouble getting past the concern about what if it sells and there's a different owner, it goes with it. I don't understand the, I don't know what the concern is there. So y'all help me.
She, she plans to keep the O1, tract 1. She wants to donate tract 2, the P1, to a church. There's currently a church there. And she wants to sell tract 3.
We want to get this.
Yeah, I'm just hanging on every word. This is just, now this kind of changes the whole, whole deal now. So we've been told one thing, now we're told the third.
Is this the third option now?
So my understanding is the motion that has currently been made and seconded would be to grant the waiver except for the sidewalk on tract 1 going east from the existing driveway to the east property line and they would be required to build a six-foot sidewalk in that location.
But there's, then if you do that, then, then if you do, you do that, there's no improvement from east of that driveway. There's no curb here. So you're actually putting a sidewalk without, so if we do improve it, kind of like what we've had before, that's something that would probably have to be removed because you'd put a curb.
We don't have any plans to improve. We do this all the time. People put sidewalks every night and curb.
I usually try and discourage it if they don't know where to put it.
Same, Mayor. If there, and I have voted that way as well, if there's a ditch or real good reason that a sidewalk won't work and maybe that's the case, I don't know.
That's kind of why I wish I was looking at it.
Yeah.
You know, we're kind of shooting from the hip here if we're not, and we're costing her a lot of money shooting from the hip.
I hate to complicate things, but I have a quick question. So earlier it was said if this is waived for the subdivision, it's waived, but if this were to go to a large scale, it would be reinstated. It wouldn't, it doesn't waive it forever. If this developed, then it would all be back in play.
Tract A wouldn't go to a large scale, though, would it? Tract 1, I mean?
Well, it wouldn't if they keep it as is, but if they changed it, modified it, added on, anything like that, it would go to a large scale or a non-large scale, but same requirements still hold.
Non-large scale?
Less than an acre.
Less than an acre.
So if they came in with a non-large scale, the questions we were asked about it going to the next owner, whoever, whoever owns it, if it comes in as a non-large scale development?
All the requirements are engaged again.
Back in, back in play.
Would need to be waived again if they weren't going to be built at that time.
I think that is what everybody's asking.
Okay, now I understand a little bit. I was having trouble getting, getting in my mind.
Sorry, if no development plan is put forth and someone just utilizes the house that's been converted to an office, we wouldn't require improvements. So just note, that's if they come in with improvements.
I think I'm going to second your motion then, if that's what, if that is.
Didn't second.
Though we never rescinded his motion.
It's the very first motion.
All right. And Randall, you withdraw your second to Jeff's motion?
Option 1.
You restate your motion? Okay. Vote to approve with option 1.
Correct.
And...
Second.
Yeah, but it was very good.
Brian seconded that. That was a dandy discussion. From something.
I was sleeping all through Watson's soliloquy.
Is there anyone that has any more questions? We are, we're voting on the, basically the full, the waiver, to approve the waiver. Okay. All right, call for the vote.
You going to help me proofread that resolution in the morning or something? Okay, the last planning item. This is another waiver request. This is over on North Graham Road. The title of this one is approving a waiver, W-2514, a resolution approving a waiver, W-2514 of Street Improvements, Drainage, Curbs, Gutters, Sidewalks, and Streetlights Set forth in Ordinance 3725 to Arkamo Tree Service in Connection with L-25-12, a Large Scale Development. And for this request, I will just note that the engineering department recommended that the waiver not include the streetlight requirement. So it is in the title because we leave that title, but we'll make sure the rest of the resolution reflects the exclusion of streetlights.
And this is kind of watered up with the 612 construction?
Correct, correct.
Is that already zoned the way it needed to be zoned?
It is. It was rezoned at last fall to I-1.
When 612 is constructed, Graham Road will end in a cul-de-sac on the north side of the highway.
You guys got me gunshot on these now. I move the resolution be adopted, option 1.
Second.
All right.
Graham Road's going to be cul-de-sac where?
On the north side and on the south side of new 612, which the south property line of this property is coincident with the new right-of-way of 612.
You need the map?
The resolution would still require streetlights?
It would.
On Graham Road?
It's mostly just a streetlight at the driveway into the property.
We do have a motion and a second. I'll give a second for, if there are any more questions. Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote on this deal. Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote on this deal. Call for the vote.
Carrie six, zero.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you, Sharon. Item eight, Finance Committee and Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Thank you. We had, it looks like four items that came from the Finance Committee. The first one is eight A, having to do with temporary use agreement. This resolution was forward to council with a recommendation for approval. There was a lot of discussion about parking on this property and different things, and I don't know if we want to get into all that explanation again, but if we do, I'll let Ernest do that. But the title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the execution of a temporary use agreement on property owned by the city of Springdale, Arkansas. It seems to me like that we were, they were going to agree to something, Ernest, right? Isn't that what we talked about?
We, we did. There was a, a provision added to the temporary use agreement that said that all construction trailers and materials shall be stored in the area shown on the attached exhibit, and that's red page 104. You all had indicated that the area for fencing office and the storage would be south of that parcel line, which is the area in yellow on the map on red page 104.
And they've agreed to that?
They have. I met with them, met with them today, and they're okay with that.
Move the resolution to pass.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
And second. Any other questions or comments?
Do we need to wait on Randall before we vote?
Probably. Depends on what the vote is, yeah.
He, he doesn't have an excused absence.
All right, let's call, let's call for the vote.
Carrie's five, zero.
There we go. Did it without him.
Second item, eight B, has to do with the American Legion building across the street. This one was also forward to council with a recommendation for approval. The title of this resolution is a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with the American Legion Beely Johnson, post 139, on property owned by the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas.
Your resolution to pass. Second, and Ernest, if you would, just explain the differences in the, this term of the lease and the previous lease.
Sure, the, well, the term is quite a bit shorter. The original lease, I believe, is a 98 years. This lease term is 30 years. They pay monthly rental. They're responsible for insurance on contents. They have to carry liability insurance. The city maintains insurance on the building proper. They pay, tenant pays all utilities. Any subletting of the building would be subject to the building usage agreement, which is in the packet as well. And I'm quite certain I probably left something else out.
We'll continue to maintain the?
The grounds.
The grounds, yeah.
And we do need, and we do get to keep a historic building that's been here since the, since the WPA times.
That, that we've recently brought back in shape and, and probably be doing more inside, yeah.
And we did, and we did talk about if we did do something to the inside, that the rent would be abated during the time they weren't able to use it, so.
We do? Okay. We do have a motion, second. Thank you. And if there are no other questions, I'll call for the vote.
Carrie six, zero.
The third item, third resolution, has to do with the improvements to Watkins Avenue. Also forward to council with a recommendation for approval. The title of this resolution is a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement for construction phase services on Watkins, Watkins Avenue Improvements, project number 18, BPS 15. Ben, you want to address this?
Yeah, this is the pedestrian bridge crossing and improvements of Watkins Avenue between 40th and, and Jean George Boulevard. This is for the construction services with McClellan Engineering for 274,735 on an hourly not-to-exceed contract.
We have the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion, motion second to approve. Other questions or comments? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Carrie six, zero.
The final item, also forward to council with a recommendation for approval, is the resolution having to do with the Jean George Boulevard improvements. Title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the execution of a guaranteed maximum price for construction agreement on Jean George Boulevard North, parentheses, 56th Street, project number 23, BPS four.
Your resolution to pass.
Second.
Motion, excuse me, motion second to approve the resolution. Other questions or comments? We'll brag on this low, low bid again. I enjoyed that. About five million under what we thought, or what the estimates were, so let's, let's see if we can keep that going.
Well, Black Hills is eating into that, but.
Oh, okay. The gas company will get there or something. All right. All right, any other comments? Call for the vote.
Carrie six, zero.
All right, thank you. Any comments from council?
So Mayor, I just wanted to mention, I noticed walking in, the area across the street where the masons were and the different things, all that's gone and how nice it looks. I think it's, it really improves that area. Is, is that pretty much all that's planned there now, or?
That's pretty much it. We kind of fought for fescue there. We need, it needs to be mowed, Ben, but I know we're waiting on them to turn it over to us, so. Placed a little of it that didn't take, I think. But thank you, Jeff. I, I think that's really, really going to be a nice spot for everybody, just to enjoy, so. Any other comments?
Mark was just saying about the wagon wheel overpass. Maybe talking with ARDOT about getting some plans for it. Those, those trucks really beat that thing up out there, and we have a lot of asphalt that goes missing out of that turn to the south lane of 49. But it's, it stays in pretty bad shape out there.
And a lot of traffic on.
And a lot of traffic.
Yeah, it's got all that, all that quarry traffic.
In the mornings, it's backed up from the stoplight till past 48, what is that, 48th Street, 40th Street, all the way back.
Yeah, that's been an ongoing conversation. That's been a trouble spot for a long time that is only, will only get worse. I don't know, Ben, or is ARDOT looking at that lately or got any ideas on it? We're pretty limited.
I, I haven't heard anything lately. I mean, we can certainly write a letter requesting them to look at that as a problem in the city and see what, see what they say.
As far as the, as far as the surface of wagon wheel, though, that's on us, right?
Well, I think they're talking about the bridge, and the bridge is actually ARDOT's.
We don't, okay.
It's the, the turn lane going onto the on-ramp. There's huge, there's big dips and, I mean, when you, everybody turns early to avoid the, the ruts and everything to try to get through there. It's pretty bad shape.
Let's look at it, see what, see what we need to ask, see what we're asking them for. All right, city attorney, you got anything?
No, sir.
Staff have anything before I, we've, we've left y'all off of this. Yeah. Everybody's shaking their head, so. I don't have anything either. Got a motion to adjourn? There it is.